Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on November 6, 2018, Election Day. I hope you all have voted already. If you haven't, you just ran out of time.[11.12][11.12](Laughter). I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Bob Ward.
Look, Frank. As all of you are aware, today is Election Day, and today we are especially reminded and remain grateful for the many freedoms of our democracy. We are grateful for living in a democracy where we, as citizens, participate in our own governance and can choose our representatives. We are thankful for all those who ran for office, who voted, who participated in some way in today's elections. We especially ask for blessings for the representatives to be elected today and those who will be re-elected representatives. We ask for a special blessing on all of them as they begin or continue their service to our community, county, state, and country. And as we convene tonight, we acknowledge that our actions as elected representatives must address the needs of our city and the interests and rights of our citizens. We ask that our efforts be guided by clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, and our decisions with impartiality. And we ask that our actions be guided by the highest standards of etiquette and that our personal faith give us the strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us tonight. And we ask your blessings on our city, county, state, and country. Amen.
I would like to recognize a couple Boy Scouts that we have in the audience. I understand there's a couple folks here working on their citizenship and community merit badge from Troop 144. If y'all are here, if you wouldn't mind standing up. Excellent. Welcome. Appreciate the meeting.[114.61][114.61](Applause). At this time, we recognize our city clerk, Renee Ward.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there's any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None.
I have a conflict of interest. I'll bring it up when we do the agenda.
All right. Before council is the set of minutes from October 16, 2018, City Council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
No motion.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motions past minutes have been approved. We have four add-on agenda items to the consent agenda this evening. Item F to set a date of public hearing for Anthony Road voluntary contiguous annexation. Item G to set a date of public hearing for 1722 Shamrock Drive voluntary contiguous annexation. Item H to set a date of public hearing for 1198 Colony Drive 16.59 acre portion voluntary contiguous annexation. And item I to set a date of public hearing for 1198 Colony Drive 8.21 acre portion voluntary contiguous annexation. Do I hear a motion to approve these add-on agenda items?
Make a motion.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda items have been added. Before council is the agenda with the add-ons, do I hear a motion to approve that agenda?
Before we do that, I would like to remove item A from the consent agenda to be voted on separately.
Okay. Do I hear a second for that? Second. All those in favor of removing item A, please say aye. All those opposed, item A has been removed from our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item A?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the add-ons, minus item A as requested.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda minus item A with the add-ons has been approved. Next is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A has been removed. Item B to temporarily close the following streets on Sunday, November 17, 2018, beginning at 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. for the 72nd Annual Burlington Christmas Parade. Those streets and the details are spelled out in your agenda. Item C to reclassify two part-time customer service positions to one full-time water billing technician, Level 17, effective upon council approval. Item D to approve the reclassification of a wastewater plant operator 1, Level 21 vacant position, to a compost operator Level 19 position, and to approve the reclassification of an equipment operator 2, Level 18 position, to a compost operator Level 19 position, effective upon council approval. Item E to approve the 2019 City Council and Work Session meeting schedule is spelled out in your agenda. Item F to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for December 4, 2018, to consider Anthony Road voluntary contiguous annexation. Item G to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for December 4, 2018, to consider the 1722 Shamrock Drive voluntary contiguous annexation. Item H to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for December 4, 2018, to consider an annexation request for a 16.59 acre portion of the property located at 1198 Colony Drive. Item I to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for December 4, 2018, to consider an annexation request for an 8.21 acre portion of the property located at 1198 Colony Drive. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
Someone.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda has been approved. This time, do we want to discuss item A of the agenda?
Excuse me.
Okay. Item A is to adopt an ordinance approving a traffic commission recommendation requesting to remove the existing loading zone space at the south side of East Main Street from 1.99 feet southwest from the intersection of East Front Street and South Main Street to 1.43 feet southwest from the same.
Mayor, this time, I think it would be appropriate for you to vote on to allow Ms. Hikes to recuse herself on this particular item.
Right.
I have looked at this situation and I think that she does, in fact, have a conflict based upon her position as far as the noteholders on the adjoining property.
Okay.
Ask for a motion.
Do I hear a motion from council to recuse Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes?
Make a motion to recuse Mrs. Hikes from this item.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes has been recused from this agenda item. Do I hear a motion regarding item A?
Make a motion that we approve item A to adopt the ordinance approving the traffic commission's recommendation as requested.
Second. Any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, item A has been approved. It's time for you to... Manager, would you... Welcome back. We have two items of unfinished business this evening. Item number one, a public hearing has been continued to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for 1198 Colony Avenue voluntary contiguous annexation. This is continued from our October 16, 2018, City Council meeting. This time, we recognize Todd Lambert, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, this piece is also tied directly to the request in which you set the public hearing for earlier in the consent agenda for December 4. So staff would just recommend and request your approval to continue this item to the December 4 meeting as well, to make those all heard in the same meeting. The applicant's attorney, Joe Kahlo, is here, if you have any questions of him.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion to continue this to the December 4 meeting?
Continue this until December 4.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion to continue to December 4? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kahlo. Item two of unfinished business, City Council will consider an application to rezone from R-15 Residential District to CR Conditional Residential District for the use of a 288-unit apartment complex. The property is located on the north side of Bonner Bridge Parkway approximately 1,600 feet from Danbrook Road, referenced as Alman's County Tax Identification Number 106902 and being a portion of 106900. The public hearing for this item was held on July 30, 2018, and closed at the City Council meeting. At this time, we recognize City Attorney David Huffman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. You recall, you did, in fact, close the public hearing at that time, and a motion was made by Councilman Owen and seconded by Councilman Ward to deny the request, and that matter was on the table at the time that a procedural motion was made to continue it, and y'all voted in favor of that continuance. This motion, the initial motion, substantive motion, still remains on the table to be addressed first, and when it comes time to do that, to address this motion, it's on the table first. You were closed, the public hearing has been closed, but obviously you directed your staff to get together with the folks of ESS as well as the developer, and I think it would be appropriate for, although the public hearing's been closed, to obviously inquire as to what their findings were and what efforts they made over the course of an interim period of time.
Excellent. This time, Amy, if you'd like to present those findings.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. By way of review, this request was vetted through the city's technical review committee. The developer of the proposed apartments agreed to make road improvements to the intersection of Bonner Bridge and University Drive. That includes installing an additional left turn lane and related traffic signal improvements. Exhibit A has been added to your packets to show the improvements also being proposed for Highland Elementary School. Some of the public comments received included concerns of the impact of additional traffic as well as safety for the children at Highland Elementary School across from the proposed site. Planning staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the rezoning request to council. This request was heard at the July 30, 2018, meeting, where council directed the developer to study traffic around the school in coordination with staff and residents, which has been done. Since that time, the plan has been updated and Condition Number Eight has been added, all of which is in your agenda packets, and that's what you're being asked to consider tonight, and the developer's here to speak to this request.
Amy, which item is supposed to be again in that package?
It's the one that's labeled Number Eight.
I don't think it's in that package. Do you have the diagram of the property?
This one. Is that the one you were talking about?
Yeah. Yep. It shows the left turn improvement as noted. All right.
Thank you. My name is Tom Johnson. I'm with the law firm of Williams Mullen in Raleigh, North Carolina, here on behalf of the applicant. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity at the last meeting to explore the issues with the school traffic, because that was a big area of concern to the community, and I have to commend the city staff, the staff at the school system, as well as the community in working together in a very collaborative way to come up with a solution to the concerns about school traffic backing up onto Bonner Bridge. This exhibit shows that. I have a traffic engineer from Timmins who can come up here and speak it in a more detailed way, but we went through several meetings, but also observations. There were actual additional observations during the high traffic time at school, at drop-off, not only at the first day of school, which is absolutely the worst time for school traffic, but as well as other times that were not on the first day, just to see how traffic flowed and what happened. I will say, from those observations, one thing that was of concern, stated several times at the last hearing, was a concern about traffic blocking the fire department. Actually, during one of those observations, there was a fire call during the time that folks were dropping off children at school, and the truck had no difficulty getting out and giving the service that they needed to provide, as well as we got comments during the process from the fire chief that he did not see any difficulty at all with his ability to provide service from this location. But what we did, based upon the observations, to resolve the problem, and again, it was with community input as well as staff input, is to add an additional lane to allow for traffic, drop-off traffic to come in, as Amy's showing right there, an additional lane for stacking on the school property, so that it prevents any stacking of traffic on Bonner Bridge Parkway. So that accommodates and will fully accommodate the traffic coming in, and it also helps eliminate conflicts with the bus traffic coming in, because you have that additional lane for parents dropping children off. The other thing that was done is exiting the property. We noticed that there were some issues with left turns coming out onto Bonner Bridge Parkway. So therefore, we eliminated the left turn coming out and made it a right-only turn coming out of the school property, as Amy's showing there, in order to prevent the backups from folks waiting to turn left, and that made a tremendous difference in terms of backing up within the school property and creating conflicts there, because when that backup occurs, you start having some backups with the parking lot and people getting in and out of the parking lot on the school site, and so by doing that, that addresses that issue. In going through this process, another issue that we talked about before was pedestrian traffic. I did want to address that as well. What we've done in our site plan is added a sidewalk with properly-marked crosswalk coming in, as Amy's showing there, and it will give something that just doesn't exist now, and it allows an ability for those who are walking to school to cross at that location well-marked with the required markings for the crosswalk, but also with a refuge island in the middle of the road, so that when pedestrians are crossing, they have a place to stop in the middle of the road before continuing on across to the school. That's something that doesn't exist that this developer is paying for. In addition to that, an additional sidewalk will go into the schools at a location that the school approved, to allow for students to move from that location onto the school property. So that's being done, again, at this developer's expense, as well as all these improvements. We have run this by the officials of the school system, the assistant superintendent, the person in charge of operations, and the principal, and they've all agreed that this works. On top of that, or that they're in agreement with the improvements. On top of that, we had an additional community meeting, where we brought the community together, showed this plan, and asked, is there any concerns? Are there any questions? Just allowed them to give any input they wanted to. And again, we were able to still move forward with this plan. We did not get any substantive concerns with how this was going to work, because it was going to, in a very positive way, address the school traffic and get the traffic off the road, and allow for pedestrian traffic, which allows for an additional way, for any students that may be in the apartment complex, have a safe way to cross the road without having to drive in order to be able to get to the school. So we did all of that on top of the additional improvements we had proposed before, which were at University Drive, adding, as Amy said, the additional left turn lane at the developer's expense voluntarily. It's not required, but this is voluntarily that the developer is willing to do at this location. So we have done everything, really, that we were asked to do as of the last meeting, to work with the staff, to work with the school system, to work with the community to come up with a solution. And we're pleased to be able to come to you tonight and say, we have done that. We have come up with that solution to work and to solve that issue of traffic, particularly in the morning, but it will help with the flow of traffic there at the school, for not only dealing with the apartments, but for the whole community, those that attend this school. If you will look, and there's a memorandum out there as well that you've been provided with, it also assumes worst-case scenario, this plan, that if the school had to add trailers and add a lot more capacity at that school, which is not planned, but we over-planned so that in the event that this school is increased in capacity, that this will still function as intended. I think, Jeff, if you could correct me, is it 50% increase? 50% additional students at that school, which it doesn't have the capacity for now, but if that were added, this additional improvement would handle that and function appropriately. I am happy to answer any other questions that you may have as a council. Again, our goal was to come here tonight, which we are, and say, we have taken care of this issue by working with everybody, and I just commend your staff. They've been wonderful. Nolan Kurtman and Mike Nunn have really worked really hard with us to get to this point, and the school system was attending and participating, and again, we had community representatives at those meetings and had the additional community meeting, and these are things that this developer, another developer might not do, and we said that at the last meeting, another developer could come in here, and that property is going to develop and not have to do any improvements, but this developer is willing to do that, because he's a part of the community now and will be a part of the community going forward, and wanted to do these extra things for not only the school, but for the traveling public in this area. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions from council?
And we do have drone footage. I will say that the city did fly a drone, and we drew up drone footage, if you wanted to see it, of the observations, and the city also did an additional traffic count, aside from what our traffic engineer did, and confirmed that our traffic counts were accurate in terms of what the apartments, the additional traffic the department would bring to the location. I did want to point that out.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. There may be questions.
Questions from council?
So just from load capacity on the school property itself, in other words, the stacking traffic that were moving from Bonner to school property, what was the load improvement for that piece of property as far as car count?
Car count? Jeff, come on up here. I'll let our traffic engineers...
Or just briefly go through the plan, so we can get a good visual of...
Right. Jeff O'Donnell worked with Timmins Group in Raleigh, North Carolina. Basically, what we did was we looked at the existing school capacity, it's 711 students right now, and we took that and we did 150%, which puts it at about, I think it's 1,067 students. We put that number into the NCDOT's MSTA school calculator, it's the Municipal School Transportation Assistance Program. They come up with their own school calculator, which estimates a projected queue for the number of students. It also estimates a 30% higher additional, adds that on. We actually accounted for that 30% as well, so that it goes from, I've got my notes, I can tell you what it is, 700 students, but it goes to 2,300 linear feet of stacking. So I think we added somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 or so linear feet of stacking onsite for additional vehicles.
Any other questions? Can you clarify, when you were listing the improvements, did you list that the University Drive improvements would also be continued, or...
Yeah, they're going to continue to, that's not changing.
Okay.
So the improvements that we're doing is we're adding an additional left turn lane coming out from Bonner Bridge Parkway onto University Drive with related signal improvements. There will need to be an additional signal head for that, and we're also having to readjust the median that exists on Bonner Bridge to be able to accommodate that turn lane, so we have to move that median over in order to accommodate that additional left turn lane. In addition to that, we're doing the crosswalk and pedestrian refuge in the middle of Bonner Bridge Parkway, so that the public can cross safely at the location, as well as any signage that may be required. We're adding a new sidewalk, as it shows on here, from Bonner Bridge Road along the Western Loop. We're doing fence behind the back of the curb to the sidewalk, which was requested by the school system to adjoin the additional, separate the sidewalk from the cars coming in. We're doing new ADA ramps and crosswalk into the school system in addition to the sidewalk improvement that we're providing, and we're also having to add and restripe the additional stacking lane that comes into the school, so that there will actually be a full additional stacking lane inbound, and restriping so that on the outbound traffic, it'll be right turn only, and that includes some additional striping to restrict traffic. What we've done is in that far right turn lane, as you can see, Amy, there to the left, that triangle there, just to the left of where you got it right there, that's just to make it so that that is a dedicated right turn into the queuing lane coming into the school, and prevents traffic coming from the other direction to be able to turn left into that lane. So it dedicates that lane to the traffic coming from Macintosh, which is where a lot of the traffic will come from with parents dropping students off, and the other two inbound lanes, ones for buses and the others for parents coming from, that would be heading westbound on Bonner Bridge. So all of those improvements are being done at, not at school's expense, that's being done at this developer's expense.
Also the striping into the left turn, striping into the daycare front or...
Oh, I'm sorry. And the initial plan did ask that we do some left turn striping into the daycare center that's just west of the school, and we are doing that as well, and then doing, you know, the traditional, the right turn lane coming into the project, as well as a left turn lane coming into the project that we're doing.
If I could follow up on Jim's question, and maybe I misunderstood this, but with the new plan that you're proposing on school property, do you have a number of cars, then, that would take off Bonner Bridge as a result of this plan here, that would normally be on the road stacked up on the road itself, not on school property?
Yeah, that additional 600 linear feet, I can, I'll get that number for you exactly, but it's approximately 600 feet, but that additional 600 feet, you assume on a stacked situation, 25 feet per vehicle, so you've got 24 additional vehicles, storage for 24 additional vehicles that can be pulled off Bonner Bridge and stored onsite. We never, I mean, first day of school was by far an exception. We observed at least 24 on Bonner Bridge, but when we observed traffic, the three times that we were out there, traffic queued to, at the maximum queued to the first driveway at the fire station, never queued beyond, if it queued to it, it was approximately 13 to 14 vehicles, if I remember the number correctly, so that gives adequate space, and there was adequate space to, a little bit available space. The way they currently do their stacking, they only allow stacking on the outer loop, and that inner loop is for folks that want to bypass the queue, if they have to drop off students early, or various other things, basically, so they're not utilizing current onsite available storage, but what this plan does is it allows them to, this allows them to use the dual, the two lanes of stacking, and then because that third lane can be used for, as a bypass, as needed, for the bus lane or the emergency vehicle lane.
Any additional council questions? Thank you.
And I did want to speak to one other item that I know was raised at the last meeting. I did want to make sure, we did have an appraiser, because I think Mr. Ward, we had an appraiser look at its impact on adjoining property values, and he's here tonight, if you wanted to ask him questions, but found that there would be no adverse impact.
I didn't think it would be.
Yeah, but he did look at that, and he's here if there were any questions. I just made sure, I wanted to make sure that was addressed, Mr. Ward.
Thank you for mentioning that.
In light of this, and I'm going to need your help, Mr. Attorney, so you can earn your salary tonight. I made the motion, and I think Mr. Ward seconded, to deny the request. Following that motion, other discussion came forth in reference to sit down and meet with all parties involved to attempt to see if there was any improvements that could be made that could satisfy the concerns that most people addressed. That motion is on the table. Just for public information, I will not vote for that motion now, because it appears to me, what's been said to us from a technical side, is that the efforts that have been made by the developer, the school system, the city, involving at least two sets of traffic engineers, and also the DOT, basically addressed the concern that I had, which was always traffic. So, as I understand it, Mr. Huffman, that motion has to be voted on now. So I want to be very clear on that.
So we'll vote on the existing motion from the previous meeting.
Existing motion is to deny the rezoning request.
Any questions or further discussion regarding Mr. Owen's motion carried over from the previous meeting? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
That's two votes for, three opposed. The motion fails. Do I hear a new motion?
Well, based on, again, what I said earlier, in reference to the traffic and then the information invited us by the technical people, I move that we recommend the approval of this request based upon consistency with the comprehensive plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
I second that motion. Any discussion regarding the motion?
I just want to say one thing about it, and this is, I commend the developer for the amount of work that went into this and the city staff, and I went out there myself and took my own pictures during this school, especially in the morning rush hour, but my concern is something that the developer can't fix, and either can the city at this point, and that is that we, I really believe that this area needs another access point to allow another way... to allow another way to get out of the neighborhood. And I would like to see us do something about that in the future, but that's not something that can be resolved at this point. But it's of enough concern to me that I really feel as though I cannot support this.
I'm not going to repeat that, but I do want to thank the developer for what you've done. In other words, you came to the table, just like you said, you met with everybody, and in order to that be willing to, you know, put the money to do, you know, what is necessary to get it done. But I just honestly think, I think, I think if the apartment's out there, and, you know, then you get to book it, Buck Hill Village Apartments, it's going to be, I don't know, it's going to be too much of a concentration, and I still think it's a traffic. I just, at some point, we need to do something about that, and that's, and that's why I can't, I can't support it.
Other discussion or feedback from council?
We'll add the appreciation to the development team for their work with the community. I think something council's been pushing for more and more of is that discussion with the community, because that helps us build better developments, it helps us understand the unique needs of residents that may not be reflected in codes and previous strategic plans, and to make sure that future developments are blended in a manner that helps add to the community. And we appreciate your willingness to work with different demands and different allocations being made. We don't often see the level that you've gone to in this case. In conversations with the community and looking over our plans, I think we can all agree that this area is going to be developed into something. And I think this is a good fit for it. I agree there will be traffic issues down the road as further development continues, but we see that all across our community as development continues. And we have wonderful traffic staff who address those concerns, who continue to re-engineer our community, continue to address traffic needs as we continue to grow. And as Kathy has mentioned before, we're blessed with growth as opposed to the opposite, as many communities in North Carolina are. Any further discussion?
All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion is passed, 3-2. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in today. We have a number of public hearings tonight. This one is consistent. We will take just a moment as folks. Thank you. We do have some additional items on the agenda. If you do wish to leave the room, we ask, please do so at this time. Did you need that, Amy, the statement of consistency?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, item three on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezonate a portion of 1425 Brittany Lane from I-2 Light Industrial to CI Conditional Industrial for the use of a 150-foot telecommunication tower. The property is located in Guilford County and was annexed into the Burlington City Limits in 2005. The property is referenced as being a portion of Guilford County Personal Identification Number, and goodness, they have long ones, 883-482-9348, and was zoned I-2 Light Industrial to allow commercial and industrial uses. This time we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This request is for a cell tower to cover an area of signal weakness, particularly when it comes to the use of data. The site plan has been approved by the Technical Review Committee, and information stating the needs for the tower at this location has been submitted. An additional condition was added at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to add a red light beacon to the top of the tower, something not required by the FAA at this height. This request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, the reality is that this is a cluster of industrial businesses, and telecommunications towers are allowed in industrial areas through conditional zoning. Two members of the public spoke in opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, primarily concerning the appearance of the neighboring property in front of the cell tower and property values. Staff recommends this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request, and Mr. James LaPant is here to speak to this request.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. It's true. My name is James LaPant. My job is a zoning specialist. I'm employed by Falkland Foster. That's a company that does real estate work in the telecom industry. And today, I'm doing work on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And Verizon Wireless is looking to add to their network. We did a lot of discussion at the planning commission to talk, to identify that there were, there were existing towers that are about a mile on either side, east and west of this tower, but Verizon's already on these towers. So this spot is almost, almost right in the middle between those two towers, and it fills a hole, so we really need that for our network. The different communities have different ways to approve or to have the applicant go through the requirements. In this particular community, I noted that it's to create a conditional zoning district, which I see in the ordinance says that conditional zoning districts are zoning districts in which development and use of property is subject to predetermined ordinance standards and the rules, regulations, and conditions imposed as part of the legislative decision creating the district and applying it to a particular property. We are respectfully requesting that you change a piece of land that is currently zoned as I-2 Industrial. As you can see from the map there, there are four industrial properties there. This is on the one furthest to the west. It's owned by J. and R. Dietrich Properties. Immediately to the right of that, the next two are both owned by the same owner, which is Rudy's Performing Parts, Auto Parts. I can't remember the exact name of it, but we're asking that only the one on the far left, the one where the red box is inside there, we're asking that that be rezoned from I-2 to Conditional Industrial. And the purpose for that is so that we can place a 150-foot tall monopole tower within a fenced-in compound. I had an opportunity to go out to that site, and right now, there's, if you're driving down Brittany Lane, which is to the west there, and you look in the driveway down towards that site, currently, there's an existing driveway down there, and there's storage there for industrial, industrial parts. Mostly, when I was there, it was all parts of cement mixers, the back ends of cement mixers. And so down at the end of that, back towards in the forest area, there's a little clearing before the forest, and that is the spot where we propose to put this tower. We're going to lease the access road that goes in, and we're going to lease a 100 by 100 site for our, for our cell tower to go into. If you could, if I could ask you, please, to go to drawing C-1. Thank you. C-1 is the overall site plan, and you can see that access road that I was just referring to going in from Brittany Lane. Then you see, directly south of where the hand is there on the screen, is a building that is being put in there by J. and R. Dietrich Properties. Our site is going to be sitting there, as you see it, within that circle, that ring circle. And that circle is the place where if the, if the tower were to fall over in a high wind or something like that, that is the extent of where it would fall. So you'll see, it's not going to hit any building, it's not going to hit anybody outside of that, that property. The chart on the upper right-hand side does give the distances from the tower to the, to the borderlines, and we're going to have a 90-foot fall zone, and we have, the least distance is 150 feet. So we have a lot of safety built into this. At worst case, it would fall over at 90 feet. Another aspect of safety is having to do with the transmission of, sometimes people are concerned about the, it's a radio transmitter is what it is. It receives radio signals from your cell phone, and it sends them both out. And the Federal Communications Commission has issued instructions to all municipalities so they can do an evaluation, and unless a person is regularly within 10 meters, or about 33 feet, of the top, of the transmitting part of that tower, there's no damage or no danger to anybody. So anybody that, unless they're up at 120 feet high in air continually, which there just can't be, that there's, they would be in danger. No one in that area would be of any concern there on safety. Another aspect of this is that we are compliant with the city's regulations, and as has been mentioned earlier, we have complied with everything in the Technical Review Committee and the Planning Commission. Two items that came up by the property owners, one was aesthetics for the church, but in discussions with the church there, the real concern is not so much our site is right across the street from there is the Dietrich Brothers' property, and they have front-end loaders and all that kind of stuff. So there's a, not a scene right across from the church, but our site is quite remote, and it's behind a lot of trees. So it really didn't really have to do with us. The other one was a concern about the, two other aspects. One was the aspect of sometimes the Rudy's, the guys that own Rudy, have helicopters that they fly in and out of their site. So we offered to put a red light on the top there. It's not required under 200 feet, but just to be safe, let's do that. So we offered to do that, and that came from Verizon. And the other aspect that they were concerned about was, was any possible damage to the valuation of the properties nearby. And I could talk about the safety of the thing and how it's going to fall, and I could talk about the, how it's going to look and putting the light on top of it, but I'm just a zoning guy. I don't have the, I don't have the background to talk about, is there any possible damage to the valuation of this. But I have brought an individual named Michael Berkowitz. Mr. Berkowitz is a certified real estate appraiser licensed in the state of North Carolina. He has substantial education and many years of experience, and he has prepared an impact study, and I have it here today, and he's going to come up and testify, and then after he finishes testifying, we would offer this impact study into the record to demonstrate that any potential impact on valuation.
Welcome, Mr. Berkowitz.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This proposed tower is located along the interstate, and we're looking at the impact of any proposed infrastructure, any property. What you have to look at, the first thing I did is I looked for other towers along the corridor, and also really what the key issue here from an appraisal standpoint is, would I adjust any of those properties around because of this cell tower? Well, I think one of the issues that you have there is what's there? Well, first of all, the Rudy's, which is actually developed just adjacent to the right, there's two lit billboards right there. There's also a, several iron maidens with the Duke Power right-of-way to the north, there's the interstate to the south. And so if you look down the highway and you look at the corridor itself, there are actually larger towers to the west over by Red Oak Brewery. There's some other ones that are also lit that are actually much larger. And by definition, when you're looking at an appraisal, when you have, I've actually done a study, which is including in the report, a proximity to an interstate which does impact value. So when something is there that already does impact value, and that was on residential property, this is industrial. Then when you have something there, and to say that this tower is the one that's going to cause the impact of value, that is actually what's called multicolinearity, which is not something you do in appraisal practice. To attribute it to the cell tower when there are iron maidens, the cell tower, lights along the highway, noise from the highway, in an industrial area with outside, using, having front-end loaders all there, all of those factors would contribute to it, but to attribute it to the cell tower, I think would be misleading in any way, shape, or form. The development of this tower at that particular location, and if you look at all the, all the different interchanges along, that is typically where they are located. Along the highway, if you drive that stretch of highway, there's iron maidens all along the highway. The influence of the highway creates that multicolinearity, and that's why most people do not develop their house on a highway, because it's less desirable. There's noise and external factors. What you're saying is, does the development of this tower create some external factor that would impact value? Well, this does not. There's already too many things there that could attribute to this factor. If you look also to the west, you have a cemetery, which is right across from the entrance of this proposed tower. This would not, and institutional uses are common for those areas. If you look at, I believe there's one, I had that park name, Davidson Park, there's one there. There's a cell tower there at Davidson Park. Places of gathering are common locations for this to allow for communications, school sites, parks, those types of things. This is where they go because they need that service at those particular locations. You look also further to west, apartments. Apartments are a number-one spot for these things because, in fact, a lot of developers don't even put landlines in their apartments now. So they're actually going fully wireless. So again, those are some of those locations. It is an ideal location for this, and given all these other factors that could be external factors impacting value, to attribute that, any diminution of value to a cell tower would be misleading and against professional appraisal practices. Be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Just to clarify terminology, you used the term iron maiden, which I assume is electric utility, high-tension towers.
Yes, and that's a much larger visual footprint than a cell tower, and this is a monopole tower.
Any questions from council? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would now offer this impact study based on his testimony into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Can you tell me, I can't see from that C-1 that you were showing us.
Yeah.
How many feet it is from Brittany Lane to the actual monopole?
That would be to the west, so it would be three, see that star up in the upper right-hand corner?
Yeah.
Super small writing?
Yes.
That would be to the west, and so that would be 385 feet.
Any other council questions before we begin the public hearing? All right, thank you very much. You'll have an opportunity after the public hearing to respond to any questions that council might have. This time, we will begin the public hearing for this item, if anyone would like to speak from this side of the room. If anyone would like to speak from this side. Hearing no feedback, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion there. I move, we approve this request based upon, I guess this is a consistency in the, Amy, in this one?
It's an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Okay. I move, we approve this request based upon a consistency with the comprehensive plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve?
Would this be, would this be compatible, or would we need to amend it?
It actually, well, anything you do is an amendment to the plan. However, it would be a little better to go with the second one, where it says that it's an amendment to the plan.
It would be in line with what the property, the planning and zoning.
Okay, well, I would draw that, and I have it right, okay. I move, we approve this request as amendment to the comprehensive plan, although it's consistent with the plan, this request represents a needed change in the area, thus making this request reasonable and in the public interest. I apologize for the confusion.
No worries.
And I second that.
Any questions regarding the restated motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. We appreciate you being here. Moves us through item four on agenda. Public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone 511 West Davis Street, formerly occupied by the American Red Cross from R-15 residential to CR conditional residential for the use of a four-unit apartment building. The property is referenced as Alamance County tax identification number 126662. This time we again recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This request involves former Red Cross building in the West Davis West Front Fountain Place Local Historic District. This will bring the building back to life in a conforming use. The district is residential, but this building has been used for commercial purposes in the past. It is proposed for residential use again. Some items to note about this request include: This is a conceptual plan. TRC will have final approval. They've already examined the plan and approved of the concept, including the driveway and parking. If approved by council, the plan will be required to go before the city's Historic Commission next to gain their approval. The code assessment, which was a primer for the UDO, recommended adaptive reuse of properties converting obsolete structures to new and useful purposes that can enhance the area that they're in. This project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which calls for residential in this area, and that includes multifamily development. The request is also consistent with uses that are already in the area. Three members of the public spoke in opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, primarily concerning crime, traffic congestion, and historic district guidelines. The staff recommends this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request by a vote of six to one. And Ms. Catherine Hartwell is here to speak to this.
Welcome, Ms. Hartwell.
Hello. So yes, this is, as you all know, the old Red Cross, and it has been vacant for several years. My client fell in love with the building when he saw it and wanted to develop it into something that would fit in the community and would benefit the community. And you can't really put a single-family home there, so we'd like to do a four-unit multifamily apartment building. We've met all of their requests. This is—we're applying for the conditional rezoning. There were some concerns we can address later, but— oh, there's the exterior. So we're going to—the plan is to leave the exterior as it is, except for maybe a few little decorative cobles or something. But if you have any questions for me?
Any questions from council?
I have a question, Amy. Is it—if it's approved, is it made subject to a certificate of appropriateness from the historic?
Yes, yes.
So it'll be made subject to that?
Well, what you're doing is you're rezoning it.
Right.
The Historic Commission looks at the historic aspect, so they're two separate things.
Okay. I didn't know how that worked, but that would be the next step in the process.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And I believe some years back, Mr. Lee checked with the school of government on how to do such a thing because it has happened in the past, and it was their determination that the rezoning should come first and then the historic district take a look at it.
Any other questions from council?
So would it be vetted through TRC before it goes to historic?
It's already been through TRC.
Complete.
Well, they're going to look at it again because the Historic Commission may have some changes that they want to make.
So we'll go there first?
And so then it would need to go through.
And there's also some other multifamily in this neighborhood as well.
Right, there is.
And the parking is all on the property?
It is entirely on their site, here and everywhere.
And you mentioned in last night's meeting about the property discrepancy, the triangle in the corner.
The triangle here. They are staying completely out of that triangle and entirely on their own property. They're just rezoning this part and not this part, and that shows right here as well.
If that was resolved, would there be a process to add that or rezone that as well?
It would have to be rezoned by itself.
Okay, it would be separate.
Yeah. To join in with this.
Other council questions? All right, otherwise we'll begin our public hearing. Thank you.
That's it.
Again, you will have an opportunity to respond to any questions from council following the public hearing.
Good deal.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone from this side of the room would like to speak regarding this request. Yes, get step to the microphone.
Well, I just have a question, and that is, what's the square footage of those apartments going to be?
So the building is roughly 4,000 square feet, and we plan on having three two-bedroom apartments that are roughly 900, 950 square feet.
If you could state your name.
Sorry?
State your name just for the record.
Dennis Rasmussen. I live at 423 West Davis, about 4,000 down.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else from this side of the room?
I can't hear.
Just anyone else from this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone from this side of the room?
I guess I'll switch to that.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eddie Pitts. I live at 602 West Davis Street. She can go back to the original thing there. I'm across the street, catty-cornered from that American Red Cross, and I'm directly across the street, Kathy, from that multifamily unit you're referring to that we call the crack house on Davis Street. Just like my IPD there hunting on Friday and Saturday night, but our boys keep them contained right there in that property right there. And so me and a couple other fellows that can't be here tonight, because like I said, being in the historic district, most of us is old, can't get along much better. I dropped them. Dropped them both or something here. Suppose I take a stab at it. Here we go. Now, I've been there 25 years, and for 25 years, we've had to adhere, like I say, to the historic districts, demands, requests, guidelines, and so forth. But we object to this project on two points. The first one, like I said, with the planning commission, is you're taking a residential building slash office building, Dr. McDade's old home, office. Some of y'all have been old enough to know who Dr. McDade was. And we've got a foreign investor coming in wanting to strip the house down, rebuild it. Of course, they claim they're going to leave the exterior side as it is, but as you see in the drawing, there's a lot of new stuff that I'm sure the Historical Commission will have something to say about that. But what we're doing is we're turning this thing into a seven-bedroom unit. Now, that particular property is on the corner of Tarpley Street and Davis. Now, if anybody knows anything about that neck of the woods, they know that Tarpley is a one-way street. It's north to Davis— I mean, the front street. It's a narrow street. And when you put a seven-bedroom complex right beside one over to the left of it, they're going to have seven parking places in there for those three— for those four units in there. But with seven bedrooms, how many people you can put in seven bedrooms? For low-income housing, that's who they're marketing to, $400, $500 a month. They claim it's for young people that's coming in looking for low-income housing. But these young people coming in, they ain't looking for this old stuff over here in the historical society. You know, it takes a special owner to come into our district to buy a piece of property and appreciate what they bought. This guy's buying it, loving it so much, he's going to tear it up, chunk it up, and then leave it for us to deal with. Just like the city council approved 25 years ago for that property across the street that I'm living across, a multifamily. Well, you see what it's turned into now. It's not what it was originally intended to be. And that's exactly, we feel like, what's going to happen to that piece of property. Overflow parking, you know, you're going to have guests. You're going to have more than one car for each parking place. I think they've assigned two for each one, except for maybe the one bedroom. But my point is, that overflow parking is going to be on Tarpley Street, more likely on the right-hand side of Tarpley Street and the right-hand side of Davis Street. But you try to get a fire truck to turn and go up Tarpley Street with the traffic on the right-hand side parking there, boys, ain't going to happen. They barely can get through it now when they have to first respond on the crack house across the street. Reason I know, I'm sitting here watching Friday and Saturday night. So my point is, safety from that respect, that I think it's just too many apartments in one 4,000-square-foot building. Seven-bedroom apartment in a 4,000-square-foot building. I mean, that's like putting seven bedrooms in a 4,000— I don't have that many bedrooms. I'm in a 5,000-square-foot house. But that's what I'm looking at so far as, you know, the zoning, is if you put that many people in condensed area with that traffic, even though our traffic commission has approved it, I don't think they're looking at it from what it is. What if one of those houses is up the street calling a fire? The fire department wouldn't be able to get in there to them. The second thing I oppose, I guess it's more from the emotional side, the historical side of it, you know, and that may be what the historical side would do. But if you guys approve this application, it's a rubber stamp. It may already be a rubber stamp. I don't know. It might be wasting my time, Danny. I don't know. You don't have to be talking this time. But anyway, like I said, we've had to adhere to these rules about restoring, not replacing or rebuilding, restoring. So if you guys let this guy do this, you might as well just open the door for all of us owners that have these other big homes to just file condition, conditional residential. Because I was worried who's going to buy my house when I get a little older. I think it'll be the young people because they don't want old stuff. It's going to take a special type of person to market, to buy my property. And if I've got two crack houses across the street, it's going to be even harder to market that property. So I'm looking for you guys to lead, okay? You lead by example. So how are you going to lead us into this right here? Are you going to maintain, help us maintain this historic district integrity, what y'all decided you wanted in 1994 when you created this district? Or do you want to now go and modernize it? You know, have all new stuff put in there inside and out? Choices yourselves evidently, but I believe—and I'm not an attorney—but I believe this might set a precedent for other owners to the right across the street. It's got big homes. Hey, we can't sell our property, so let's just reclassify it, make about five or six apartments out of our stuff, and go from there. I certainly have more property for parking than the one across the street, so—
Thank you, Eddie. Do you have any further comments?
No.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, please. You could state your name and address for the record.
My name's Tara Mitchell, and I live at 604 West Front Street. And I also own a property at 508 West Front Street, which is one block over from the Red Cross. I brought my three kids who play up and down Tarpley Avenue, and we also witness a lot of the— we also witness and engage with people in the boarding house that live at the corner of Tarpley and West Davis. So I share a lot of the same concerns. I heard four apartments, and then I was wondering what the price point for rent was going to be, what they were looking to lease it for. Do you know?
Um, is there market value?
Which is?
Right now, probably somewhere between $900 to $1,200.
Okay. Okay. So the 508 West Front Street that I own is also a duplex, and in 2004 had to go through this with the rezoning, and it was conditionally rezoned because of an error made by the city, which is on the record. So—but at that time, we faced people who wanted that property after it burnt down to be put as a single-family home. And in 2004 through 2007, it took to rebuild it, a lot of the feedback was that we did not want multifamily homes in the historical district, and that any one— any other multifamily home in that district had been grandfathered in and was no longer allowed when it became a historical district. I was 28 years old. I have a heart that loves old homes. I then brought—I then moved three houses down because I fell in love with the historical district and bought another old home, which I currently live in and raise my family in for 10 years. So to say I'm invested financially and emotionally into the neighborhood is not an understatement. It's a fact. And I'm still 28. Don't ask me how we did that. But what I can say is, my rental history for that duplex, which is around— it's a top and bottom apartment. It looks like a single-family home from the outside. It's two apartments that are about 1,000 square feet. One of them is a one-bedroom apartment. The upstairs is a two-bedroom apartment with one bath. So yes, is it like the cookie cutter apartments that young people want to be in? No, it is not. And in fact, that's who we attract. And since then, I can tell you, I've had an attorney. I just had two emergency room physicians. I have a professional who just relocated from Texas through her— where she was working for a company based out of Burlington, who had moved her now locally. She moved in looking exactly for this. It has been all young, professional people who have lived there and for more than one year at a time, each time. So we're talking over 11 years since I've been doing this. So when I hear that we don't want the neighborhood to attract a certain kind of person, I understand the transitional housing that the boarding house offers and the problems I have when people are looking for food on Sunday and there's nowhere in Burlington to get it. So they come to my fence and ask for it while my children are out playing. I understand that. And then I also understand what it means to have a multifamily home in a neighborhood that I love and have met wonderful people who have stayed in Burlington and stayed in the historical neighborhood after they moved in. So as far as facing like the fear and what does that mean for the neighborhood, I've had two different experiences, and a majority of them have been positive as far as offering different housing for the historical district. I'm excited about the downtown lofts that are also coming. That will be around the price point, and I would support more opportunities for a younger community who are not going to buy the 200 to 300-plus-thousand-house in that neighborhood, but have interest in living in downtown area.
Thank you.
And the last thing is, I would rather it be two than four, but if four—if they can get around that, which is— which is close to what I rent mine for and have since I started, so I can agree to the price point, which she didn't know that whenever I asked her that. If they can do that with four, I support that, but I feel like it's more likely with the two-bedroom apartment. So that's just my thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak to the other side of the room if I could. I might be sitting on the wrong side, but we're all family here.
It's all one big public hearing.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Mark Kaiser, and I am actually with HCO. And I've actually worked for Mr. Alajiday for over 10 years. Our kids have grown up together, and so I might make— take one small exception to the foreign— we're foreign only, that we're from Orange County, Wake County, and Durham County. That's as foreign as we are here.
Far enough.
That's far enough, though, and that can be different. And certainly, we know—we've been down this path before. 10 years ago, we were looking at homes like this in Durham and trying to convince our investors to, you know, come there. You know, come there. And so we're doing the same thing now. We're asking people to come to Alamance County. There's great value here. If those that know HCO know that we got a preservation award ourselves for our building down on the other end of Davis Street. So, you know, bringing our clients down here and showing them that the buildings that we're taking on and the historical nature of them, it's not—you're right, it's not for the faint of heart. These buildings are difficult. They're difficult to try to fit things into, but we do want to try to save them and keep as much of that character that we have. HCO has been managing Mr. Alajiday's properties in Durham and Wake and Orange Counties for over 10 years. We have never and never had pushback from them on taking care of tenants, on taking care of properties. We've never had complaints from cities, not from Cary, not from Chapel Hill. We do—in the same boat that everybody is, that a lot of our homes in Chapel Hill, we are renovating, and those rents are, you know, doubling in some cases. Mr. Alajiday has taken our advice and not raised rents on tenants. We've got one tenant that came at the property 14 years ago, same rent she's been paying. And I think this is the key point. That also—that tenant, they came at that property, it might have been prior to 2008. That was our—that is my— That was our, that is my personal last Section 8 government subsidized loan. I don't do any more subsidized loans anymore. It's gotten very difficult to work with affordable housing. So I'm not sure we're affordable housing either. We're in Alamance County because Alamance does represent affordability for us, whatever that means to you, but our clients are not affordable housing-type folks. When we really talk about affordable housing, that's an entirely different market, which we hope to be able to affect, but it's a very challenging market. Low margin, high cost, and that's not what this project is about. That's not necessarily what your, that end of Davis Street is about. That, you know, that might be more into our town, and I'd love to talk to you about some affordable housing issues down there that we can talk about. But I'd just like to offer my, we've been working with this, this company for a very long time. We know this investor very well. He does not put together a bad product. I'm concerned that we can't get the numbers to work for him. The rate, the rent rates are here are very different in other areas, right? And those numbers have to work. And we definitely want to keep the historical nature of this building. That's HCO's character, and that's certainly this owner's character. And I think you'd be really happy with the product that comes out if we can get it, if we can get the numbers to work. And so we can definitely help you with your home when you get time. That's a residential home, very different than this property we're talking about.
I'll be applying to it for the upper years.
Yeah, but we prefer to keep them single-family if we can. They are big, and that's, that prevents its own challenge. But this is an ideal product for downtown, higher density. You know, that's what we're seeing. You know, now a one-bedroom apartment in downtown Durham is now $1,300 a month. That's not affordable. I don't care which, where you come from. That's expensive. And, you know, we're not talking about that here, but certainly with the product that we're putting here is not, well, it would be affordable for the areas that we come from. I don't think it would be considered affordable housing for Burlington. And it's going to be a good quality product if we can get your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hi, thank you. Anyone else from this side of the room who'd like to speak? All right, hearing no further public comment. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed.
Mayor, let me ask you a question. The one point, I think really was very well taken is the, I can ask staff this, was there any consideration, was it even practical to be able to put no parking along the, at the corner of West Davis and going in, going up to...
Tarpley.
Tarpley in case of, he made a very good point about a fire truck making that turn.
Yeah. And up at the top of the street where my house is, there's a no parking on one side of the street for that very reason. So there's, there is no street parking for both sides of that street because no cars would fit, let alone a fire truck, which we did have a fire at one of the houses in the last month across the street where three fire trucks had took, had problems getting to that house already without any street parking. So I do agree with the street parking.
Great staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. There currently is no parking on the west side. We have not evaluated, no parking on the east side, but we could evaluate the, because it is an area of street, and we could look into that and see if that was, be something that would be helpful in that situation.
Well, odds are there's, people are going to have friends over, and they got to park somewhere. So my, my question is, I think that is a, a public safety concern.
We can definitely look into it.
Other council questions? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I move we approve this request based upon consistency with the comprehensive plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second?
I second it, get it on the table.
Okay. I do have a question. I know folks have raised a number of safety concerns for the neighborhood regarding primarily the 603 West Davis Street property. Is there anything that can be done to address some of that in relation to make sure that there's no compounding issue here?
It's already, it's already compliant with what it's set to be. From the crime aspect, I have no idea. That would be a police issue.
Okay.
Chris, you have any idea what the history of that is?
Yes, I've been on that property multiple times in the last 25 years I've been employed here. We've worked with the owners of the property several times and had improvements, and then different clientele management has worked through it. It's an owning issue, but it's an ownership issue, and we'll continue to address it. I can't speak for the, the rules regarding the historical aspect of it. I just don't understand that process of the assumption of the property. We've been working with them for several years.
Mayor, the mayor asks a very valid question. I don't know that I've ever heard two more eloquent arguments on both sides of the fence for a particular area. But what I do know is vacant buildings tend to bring an area down, as we've seen more than those that are repurposed for various things. But Mr. Pitts made some very valid comments. Is it going to be a historical district or not? We're going to maintain the integrity of that. And obviously, the commission will make that call. Is this thing progress? But it appears to me that we've got a shot to improve a vacant corner, and we've got another corner that's maybe caused a little heartburn about this project. Just or unjust, yet to know. But I think we need to take a hard look at that area and be sure we're supporting those that live in that community and what the transition of this area can and should be. And I think there's maybe a way to appease both halves of the argument if we could accomplish that on this other corner. If there's something there that we can, that we can leverage to improve that, I think we need to do it. If it's street lighting, I think we need to look into that. If it's, if it's a traffic issue on Tarpley, we need to look into that. If it's, if it is some other known housing or that sort of thing, we need to really look into it to be sure we try to put our best foot forward as a council and support staff's efforts to get that fixed.
Thank you.
Hi, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Ken DeAlajide. I'm the owner of the new, the old Red Cross building. I've been investing in real estate for over 15 years. As you can tell from how I speak, I'm not originally from around here, but I'm still American. I'm a naturalized citizen of the United States. Mr. Pitts, he does not know me from anywhere, but what he said, I agree with him because he doesn't know me. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to change his mind. With higher pledgeman architecture, which is a nationally renowned architecture firm, and they're also, they're local to this community, we're not going to spend that kind of money and replicate what's happening at 603. I mean, it doesn't make sense. HCO Properties, they introduced us to Burlington, and I just fell in love with Burlington. It has so much potential. And as Mark said, similar things that happened in Durham can actually happen in Burlington. But it has to be one property at a time, and it has to be with serious-minded people that want to make a change, that want to make a difference. And that's what we're going to do with this building. We understand the historic nature of the building. It was owned by the Red Cross, and it's been in Burlington for over 80 years. We understand that. That's why we bought the, we saw the building, we fell in love with it. We were fortunate enough to get it at a good deal, and that's why we can afford to actually spend a significant amount of money on it to bring it to par. Mr. Pitts is going to be proud of what we do by the time we're done with this building. We don't intend to tear it up. We're going to maintain the historic integrity of the exterior. We're going to put in brand-new units in it. Everything inside is going to be brand-new. We're going to redo a driveway. We're going to put seven parking spots in there. I mean, we're, we're trying to set a standard. By the time we're done, the guys at 603, they'll know the game is off because they cannot get away with that kind of stuff anymore. When, when we invest, we do it to, as a win-win. We invest for the long term. We don't, we don't flip. We don't come in, you know, do shorty work and then flip the property. I haven't sold a property in over 15 years, but I've been buying properties. I, I look for good deals. I spend significant amount of money on those buildings, get them up to speed, and then rent them at a good value. I make money. The, the community property is increasing value, and everybody wins. That's how my parents taught me how, how to live. You, you can't do something and everybody else is losing around you. You do something, everybody wins, and then they, they want to work with you again. So, Mr. Pitts, I guarantee you your property value is not going to go down. By the time we're done with our property, your value is going up.
Put it right, sir.
Yeah, and, and that's, I mean, we're going to put something that city leadership is going to be proud of. The city residents are going to be proud of, and we as developers, we're going to be proud of it because we do not put anything down. I'm a mama's boy by nature. I can't bring my mom to a property that she'll, she'll look at me and say, seriously? This is yours? I can't do it. It has to be solid. It has to be quality. And we've sent pictures of some of the renovations we've done in the past to Mr. Lee. And planning and zoning through the technical review committee, they, they did an exceptional job of holding our feet to fire and guiding us, showing us the path we need to go to make sure that this project only benefits the city. And they've done an excellent job, and we, everything they told us to do, we've done it. And as we move forward, I, I think the city will be proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you buy the property next door?
If, if, again, one building at a time. Give us an opportunity to prove ourselves. And then if you want to sell another building, we'll, we'll buy it. We'll do the same thing, but it has to be one property at a time. Give us a chance, and we'll, we'll prove, prove our worth, and we'll, hopefully, we all win.
Thank you. We appreciate your, your comments. Any further questions or comments from council regarding the motion? I will share that my wife and I moved just down the street, and as 33-year-olds, we're proud to be restoring a piece of Burlington's history and to live in that historic district. But not all millennials can yet afford to buy a house in this district, and I hope that this provides a housing opportunity for them. We're proud to be part of downtown and to live so close. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. All right, next concludes our regular agenda. Next, we have our public commentary. We have four folks on the floor. First of our public comments, on my forward, Patrick Mills.
Okay. Do I have to state my name and all that fun stuff? Okay. I just wanted to come in front of y'all and say, y'all got a great staff. Dude, the whole apartment thing that I've incessantly harassed people, I guess doing my civic duty because it pertains to me, but responses were great. I just want to let y'all know what kind of staff you have. Manager, city council's been wonderful, not yelling at me when I email them as well. But I just want to come in front of y'all and say thank you. Y'all give thanks enough. Y'all get yelled at and chastised, so just want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate your sharing that. People work hard, and they don't always get that appreciation. Next, I have Kaia Gordon.
It's a hedgehog this year.
Welcome back.
Hi.
You can bring it down.
Does this work? Okay. So first, can I get, can I bring a flyer up here?
Yeah.
I am in the seventh grade, and I attend One Law Middle School. And today, I'm raising money to raise awareness for child abuse and child neglect with my organization, Give a Child a Smile. And I would greatly appreciate any of your guys' help with my organization. There's two ways you can help. The first way is purchasing one of these plush animals, and this year, he's Herbie the Hedgehog, and he costs $19.99 plus tax, which, which totals up to $21.35. But I understand if he cannot afford this, so we do take monetary donations. When this donation reaches the cost of this plush animal, we will purchase one of the Herbie the Hedgehog's for an abused or neglected child removed from the home. And for every single Herbie the Hedgehog that is purchased, my organization, Give a Child a Smile, personally purchases one and just gives it to the children that are removed from their homes. And all the proceeds that we make tonight and every other day we raise money, it stays right here in our home state, North Carolina. Now, this, last year, according to statistics, around 127,000 children were found in abusive or negligent situations and had to be removed. And over 16,000 children are in homes, foster homes. So these are all these children that are without love or care that they need and deserve. So that's why this organization, I feel, is very important. So I would just like to know if I can count on your guys' help with my organization this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming back. And how long will you be selling this?
Until around December, like near the middle or in December.
It'd be like, I'm sorry, I'm her mother. Everything, we give all, all the animals that we have sold and raised that very last Saturday prior to Christmas, they go to the children. And then we fundraise all year for the organization, but the hedgehog will only be available up in February. But we like to do that donation before the holidays every year so that we can close up that year and start the new year.
It's kind of like a Christmas gift for the children.
And how many years have you been doing this?
This is our seventh year.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And how do we contact you, the hedgehog?
There's contact information on the inside of the flyer. We do have more if you need one. Would you like one? Okay.
So we're on, it's really easy to remember. You can order on Facebook if you go to, and you just enter in, "Give a Child a Smile, one S.T." And then that will link you, and then you message us, we contact you to make sure that you're legit, because she is only 13. And then we'll contact you, and then let you know how that you can pay right there online through PayPal, debit card, or credit card. We're also local. We live in Graham, so all over Burlington, we're going to be downtown Burlington the holiday season with them. And you're more than welcome to contact us, and we'll get one to you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our public comment period, I have Bonnie Kirk.
I'm here speaking for my neighbors as well. I want to thank you for your time, and I want to respect the limit that I have. My name is Bonnie Carr, and I live at 1065 Red Bull Lane, which you might... Lady Lane, but you might know this best as the massive corner of University Drive and South Church Street. After a complicated bankruptcy, backers for this development could lose millions. A developer has met with several of us, and he said he will be the one going forward that will be developing this site. And he told us he is going to be requesting additional rezoning. He has unapologetically said his intention is to cut his friends' losses and acquire as much gain as possible. He told us his friend is a very good person, but so are we. We are not bad people for trying to save our neighborhood and the largest investment that we have. They chose to be involved in this venture. It has been forced on us. This is a very important entrance into Burlington as well. And more dense or more commercial development is not always the best solution. That in itself can lead to even more problems. Some of us have been shown one plan to take an additional chunk of our neighborhood for high-density housing to subsidize losses made by an investor. Two additional homes in our neighborhood have been purchased by the new developer for a total of $731,000 that should have been used to fulfill the agreement and the compromise that we've made to cost encouragement in the city council members in 2014. Just brings the total amount for three houses purchased by the developers in our neighborhood to exceed well over $1 million. There had been no plans made to protect or to preserve our neighborhood or the residents that are left behind. The only plans are to ship the losses from investors and friends at our expense. Everything that I have mentioned concerns neighborhood and even greater risk. One of the houses purchased by the developer was used only for a business and for storage area for personal items such as large boats, trailers, RVs, and large equipment. And also those vehicles and heavy trucks and trailers loaded with all kinds of construction and earth-moving equipment, dump trucks that have been filled with boulders, are using our privately maintained road for access to this construction site. The construction entrances have now been blocked, so the only access to the construction site is over our road. The road has suffered damage, and the homeowners will have to pay for the repairs. The developers have told us that they own the road, but that we are responsible for maintaining it. In an attempt to save money, mounds of construction dirt will move to the wetlands to form a dam that now blocks water going into the wetlands. We have seen property flood and water standing and pouring over our bridge that has never happened in the almost 25 years that I have lived in this neighborhood. In fact, once I had a neighbor call to tell me I needed to leave work if I wanted to get home because there was a waterfall pouring over from the property beside our bridge, that property is in the city. We have flooding issues that we never had before the war began on this site. This was a concern that we and other homeowners and other developments along South Church Street Express back in 2014. Standing water is killing the trees that surround our road. They're falling on our road, creating expenses that we have incurred because no one who owns this site will help. This continues to weaken the road and the bridge into our neighborhood. There is now a deep dip in the road where our bridge begins that seems to get worse every day. The developer came to my home, and he told me he wants to complete his plans and get out of the neighborhood before the bridge collapses because it's going to be a very expensive repair, and he wants no part of that expense. This is now the only entrance and exit for us and for any emergency vehicles that we might need. There's a blatant disregard for the neighborhood and its residents. We feel as though we are there so others can save or make money, and we are left with the problems and the expenses. Our homes are no longer marketable because of this development. And I know that because several of us have tried to sell our homes. Some have already moved out and are renting their homes. My home has been well-maintained, and this was once a very desirable neighborhood. And to no fault of our own, that's been taken away from us. The new plans that have been proposed to some of us are not what city council previously approved. The initial approval of the rezoning of this land and the beginning of the development has caused a lot of issues that we foresaw and we addressed in 2014. We need the city council to reject any additional rezoning and to please respect the zoning agreement that was made in 2014. We cannot make scapegoats for poor judgment and planning. I know it's a sore sight for anyone who drives past this intersection, and I hear that all the time. But can you imagine what it's like to live in the middle of it? A beautiful piece of property has been destroyed, and we have had a front row seat to that since 2009.
Thank you, Mrs. Carr. Next, I have Joan Nelson.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, City Council. I know it's election night, and you're probably just as anxious as I am to get out, so I'll make this quick. I also live in the neighborhood. I'm one of Bonnie Carr's neighbors. As she said, I want to underscore the things that she brought up so well. If this comes to city council, and we've been told by the developer it will, this will be the third time that we have to come to city council. In 2009, it was rejected by the city council. 2014, we were told that we had to come to some compromise. We had great doubts about the developer, the water problems, et cetera. But we proceeded because we were told we had to. We came to a compromise, and all of our worst fears came to pass. It's been empty for four years now. This was passed in 2014, and nothing's happened. It's just been destruction, water problems, and we're sort of stuck there in the middle of it. The new developer is brutally honest with us. He said to us at our first meeting, "That corner was never developed because it never should have been developed. It's a horrible idea. It should never have been done." Nonetheless, he's in it, he told us, because he's trying to save a friend from going down the tubes. And to do that, they want to move into our neighborhood, take our neighborhood now, and develop it into high-density housing. He's pretty much told us, excuse my language, I'm quoting him, but he said, "Face it. You got screwed. Live with it. Move on." Now, that has been the tone of all of our discussions with him, that it's pretty unconsiliatory. He thinks he has city council behind him. He's got the money. He's going to do what he wants to do. We are still united. We're still fighting. We're exhausted from this. It's been 10 years of this. And we ask that this domino effect of mistakes does not land on us, that it's not at our expense that this all happened. We are asking that city council respect the zoning laws that we worked almost a year on on coming to some agreement, not to allow him to come into our neighborhood. He's bought three houses in the neighborhood. He said that way he'll have more votes. He can fight us, and he can take that and turn it into what he wants, make his money, save his friend, and get out. Now, that doesn't seem fair to us, and I would think as city council people who have come to do the best for the city, you would hopefully agree with us. I understand your position. You have to worry about jobs. You have to worry about schools. You have to worry about good neighborhoods. But we are a good neighborhood. The neighborhood has been there for 50 years. The sign outside says Burlington is 125 years. 50 years of that is a big chunk of time. We have good bonds. Just the fact that we have stuck together through all this, it's a strong neighborhood. It's a good neighborhood. And we just want fairness. We compromised. We worked with the city, and the plan unfortunately did not work. So we hope that when this comes to you, that you will respect the fact that we also need justice, and we don't want to be collateral damage and somebody else making their money back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comments this evening. Do I hear any city council comments?
Mayor, I've got one comment, maybe a little bit of a question for staff and maybe food for my colleagues. Kathy's AirProteum High stated her concerns over the traffic situation with McIntosh in the area out there. Something's got to be done in the future, and that area's going to continue to be a hotbed of development. That's fact. What do we need to do to know and might to start looking into, whether it's MPO, TAC, whether it's staff in general for some relief out there because the property is prime, we're going to have to start getting on board with an alternative plan for ingressing into that problem?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the benefits of that development you just approved is a major improvement at Bonner Bridge University. I think that's a good start. So I know that the third access has been discussed, and that's something that, you know, if council would like for staff to look into that, we'd be glad to look into that. We've done some preliminary assessments, but nothing, you know, very detailed. So we'll be glad to look into that and see what options there are. Obviously, you know, that has to be balanced with other priorities that we have and wait out, but we'll be glad to do that.
One of the comments that I asked in the previous meeting from the residents out there is, "Is it the apartment or is it the traffic?" We were told emphatically it was the traffic. So I think this project solved that, but there are other issues that are going to be developed or that's going to arise from future development. I think if everybody's in agreement, I'd like to see what alternatives can be done.
See if we can bring that back after the New Year's part session?
Yeah. Was not there discussion in the very beginning with the developer about the third access? Did we go back towards?
Huffman. There was, and the initial plan for McIntosh showed a connection, but it was noted as future improvements by others. So it wasn't something that was connected to the development.
At what point now, since development has gone to the east there with that access, how far are we off?
I think we're about as far to the east. You're talking about down, what's that? Yeah, about Block Ridge. We're down to the end in terms of development. I mean, there are other, you know, I believe there was another 500 units, give or take. I'm going off of memory here, that are still could be developed in McIntosh out of about roughly 1,500 total. So I believe we were about 62% last time we counted built out. But in terms of, you know, down Lock Ridge, we are at the end in terms of, you know, developments that are going in.
So that's as far as they will extend their roadway?
In terms of what was part of McIntosh development, yes.
All right. Any objection to bringing that report forward?
Third act of, I have very different, I think it'd be, that's got to be done sooner or later. And I think sooner is better, and sooner you look at it and bring it to us. It very well could involve condemnation of property acquisition, which I know that it will. And I'd like to get it in the hopper, so I'm pleased to do it. Thank you.
Okay. We'd be glad to do it.
Any other council comments? I know it's a late night, but I'll just make a couple announcements. Something exciting that happened in October is Link Transit had its highest ridership ever, 9,809 riders, which I think is commendable to all the folks that put hard work in, Mike especially, staff, everybody's worked to promote that system, and to council members for helping send the hours and make that accessible to more riders. So proof that it's working. To residents, bulk waste collection storm cleanup continues through November 16th. The bulk waste collection fees are, continue to be waived to help you with cleanup. And then we invite you to put November 17th on your calendars for our 72nd Annual Christmas Parade from 10:00 AM until noon in downtown. And then our No Filth 5K Series resumes, a wonderful program from our Recreation and Park staff at Guilford-MacIntosh Park at 10:30 AM on November 10th. And superhero theme, so I hope you all have your capes and spandex ready. I know you've got it. And our police department is continuing their strategic planning process through November and December. We invite the public to participate in those meetings with multiple meetings scheduled. You can find more information about that on our website. Just search strategic planning. Any other council comments? Do I hear a motion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you everyone for coming.